Cecily, roll call please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Thorstad?
Here.
Counselor Trask?
Here.
Proton Mahler?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present.
Counselor Gorley?
Here.
Counselor Richards?
Counselor Richards texted me earlier today stating he was sick, he would not be in this evening. And he would like to make a motion.
No.
I make a motion to accept his absence as excused.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Cecily, please call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes, let the record show that we have five eyes, one no and one absent. Moving on, it's time for public comment and I'm going to read the rules for speaker's contents. Citizens acknowledged by the chairperson to address the council shall step up to the microphone, give his or her name, address and subject matter of their comments in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairperson, shall limit their address to three minutes. All comments shall be made to the entire council and not to any single member or to staff. Any questions for council members or staff shall be presented through the chairperson. The council will determine the disposition of any issues raised, placed on the agenda, designated for work session, future agendas, refer to staff or do not consider. Okay, thank you. We have a couple of people who have submitted requests to make a public comment and I will call on the first one that I received was John Wilson. Please come forward to this table here and there's a microphone that you'll need to speak into. Thank you. Staff might want to have a copy?
Yeah, yeah.
Then make sure you sit down and then speak into the microphone so we record your name and your address, please.
There is a button to push?
Nope, it's on and ready to go.
Okay. Name is John Wilson. I live at forty-four sixty-five Long Street. I'm here to be for my brother. It's my house. And he's in a motor home right now because he doesn't have the money to move on to anyplace else. He wouldn't have any money to eat. We're in the, I'll read from the top here. Accessory dwelling unit, ADU four hundred square feet. We got some information from other cities. Oregon State Bill ten fifty-one, August twenty seventeen. One single family, one per single family home. Purposed in to improve supply of housing. Help families desire for multiple generation of family need. Land already owned, so the low, it lowers the building cost. ADU is part of the family residence. Cannot be sold separately from the resident and it cannot be rented. Local cities two seventeen to two thirteen, Corvallis has fifty-two permits. Albany has four. Salem has a hundred and four permits. Sweet Home, zero. The system development charges Salem weighs all SDC fee fees. Springfield weighs charges except for park fees. Eugene will finance for ten years. Corvallis charges a free plus construction exercise. Albany weighs water fees. Okay, we are asking the council to waive the SDC fees because electricity, sewer and water are already at that area. It's, it's in my garage shop. I'm within fifteen feet of proposed ADU. You know, we did not want to tear up Long Street in three places because we've already got the sewer lines there, the water's there, power's there, or the garage and everything. Just have to put a small line in to get to the sewer line that's there. And the cost of, from building department is eighteen thousand dollars to tear up the road and then run the line clear back to the back of the garage. When the power and water, everything is still there. There's you all have this one. This is the plans that we have to build a mother-in-law house, basically is what it is. And then that motor home will no longer be, be there, it'll be gone. And they just have a place to live that's very nice, very comfortable. But it'll take probably about six months to get everything there, get the permits and build the house. Be about four hundred square feet.
John, the timer has gone off as far as your time length. I'd like to, I said your time, your time limit has come off, just as far as the time limit, we have a crowd here tonight. Can I just ask a staff question before I dismiss you, please? Yes, Director Larson, is this a, a planning commission matter or is this, how does this process?
No, there's not a planning approval needed here because ADUs are permitted and he can build an ADU. It sounds like the issue at hand here is whether SDC fees are waived. Currently, our, our SDC ordinance requires fees to be charged when there's a new housing unit on a property and ADUs qualify as that. Our rules also stipulate that when there are multiple dwelling units on a property, that they have separate services.
Well, there's, there's separate service to powers there in, at my garage.
Yeah, so the current rules keep, keep this, staff is required to enforce those current rules of charging the SDCs and, and requiring separate service for it under our current code.
Okay. So the, the options for counsel right now is to say, thank you. And then we can have it researched further if it's to be added to the agenda, which we can discuss for the good of the order. Okay, so we're going to discuss this for the good of the order, whether it will be brought up for another agenda with staff research associated with it. Okay?
If you look here, the sewer line is already there. So why run another one and tear up the street and the yard and cost you money as well to do it?
Thank you for presenting this and all of your great information here. And we'll discuss it for the good of the order when we've wrapped up the other business of the council, okay?
It's right up inside the garage, right up the door. Panel, electrical panels right there.
Yeah, thank you for those pictures, appreciate that. I think I need to move on to the next person who's signed up to make public comment so that we can get through everybody. Okay? Thank you so much, Mr. Wilson.
Madam Mayor, it occurs to me that our guests may not know what good of the order is and when that occurs. And so I was just want to share.
Yeah, for the good of the order, we'll come at the end of our council meeting where items that are not on the agenda, we'll, we'll discuss that of what happens next with those. So you can sit around and listen till the end.
Got no place to go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gorley. Moving on to the next individual who's submitted for public comment, Brenda Rice, please come forward. I think that maybe she's left the building. Okay? We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is old business requests for code compliance abatement liens. And the next two people that would like to speak are in regards to that, but we're going to have our staff report first and then we'll have those individuals who've signed up to come speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to, to recap how we got to where we are. At the last meeting, the February thirteenth meeting, we staff brought forth some recommendations for liens to be placed on properties. Staff brought forward at the last meeting, a request for liens to be placed on properties where code compliance abatements activities had been performed. There were some public comments regarding one of the properties and some allegations brought up that merited research and investigation. And in the time between then and now, I conducted an investigation. I should give the caveat that I am not a law enforcement officer and I do not have the authority to go through any criminal violations or criminal investigations. However, when it comes to this property, I have checked with the police department, no police reports have been filed for any criminal activity associated with our code compliance activities. So I'm not aware of any crimes being committed. What I investigated was to review our, our records when it came, comes to the activities that took place, the interactions with the public that took place, what was said and what, what notices were given, what documentation was provided and so forth. So during that last meeting, three people made allegations regarding code compliance officer Blake Dawson and the city's actions in relation to the property that merited this investigation. In response, I've conducted an investigation of the enforcement activities at the property using photos, documents, videos from the city code compliance files, including five and a half hours of body worn camera footage. In addition, I have interviewed city staff members as well as John Origer, owner of Apex Property Clearing and Recycling, the firm that the city hired to abate the property. I will go through each allegation that I found in the record from the previous meeting and address each one individually. First, there were accusations of language calling people undesirables who should be quote unquote exterminated or are quote unquote insignificant or quote unquote incompetent. I have found no evidence of anything like this, no such language can be heard throughout all the body worn camera footage. Apex, in my discussions with the owner denies, he says his crew and he deny ever hearing such language and city staff also deny hearing any such terms out of Mr. Dawson's mouth. They simply have not found any evidence of any terms like that. One of the gentlemen at the last meeting made statements about a recording on a private cellphone being available. I have not been able to obtain a recording and I have called him trying to get a copy of it, but have not had any returned phone calls. There were accusations of displacement of people by the city or by the code compliance officer. This is certainly possible, however, it is not illegal. If properties are not legally occupied and there is no adequate housing on the site, then yes, people can be displaced, displaced from occupying a property when code compliance activities take place on that property. There is no exception to the city's ordinance that would allow illegal occupancy of a property in order to avoid displacing people. Accusation of insufficient notice. The city's records show quite a bit of notice. Numerous verbal warnings, warning letters and condemnation notices were posted on the property. Unfortunately, the only mailing address on file for the property is the property itself and all official notifications must be written to the owners who are deceased. The city mails notifications but has no way of knowing if they are opened or not. We make an effort to deliver them in person, but have no way of knowing if they are getting to anyone who has authority over the property. In this case, plenty of, of notices were mailed, but also those same notices were handed out and posted on the property itself. Not all visits to the property are documented, for example, Mr. Dawson regularly patrols the city and does not detail every property he visits while on each patrol. And so there are more visits to the property than we have documentation of. However, the record shows documentation of the following timeline of notices issued to the property and the city and the code compliance activities that were conducted. May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, a courtesy notification of violations was mailed. June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, a notice of violation was mailed, which included a warning that the city would commence abatement if violations were not corrected. August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, city staff exercised an administrative search warrant to verify violations on the property. Officers visited the property to investigate and gave additional verbal warnings to those present. September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, follow-up visit by a code off, by the code officer who gave verbal warnings to those present. September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, a condemnation notion, condemnation notice was posted on the guest house. October third, twenty twenty-three, follow-up visit by code officers, verbal warnings given to people present. October fifth, twenty twenty-three, condemnation notice of the west accessory dwelling structure was mailed and posted. Occupants were given seven days from posting date to vacate that structure. October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, follow-up, I visit by the code officer, verbal warnings given to people present. October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, condemnation notice of all buildings on property mailed and posted. Occupants were given twenty-one days from posting date to vacate the buildings. That twenty-one day warning period applied to people in the buildings, not the abatement of the exterior violations of the property. October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, follow-up visit by code officer, verbal warnings given to people present. October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, follow-up visit by code officer, verbal warnings given to people present. November second, twenty twenty-three, follow-up visit by code officer, verbal warnings given to people present. Initial abatement took place, removal of the covered trailer that was leaking sewage and cleanup of the exterior garbage and removal of contaminated soil. And with November third, twenty twenty-three, follow-up visit by code officer, verbal warnings given to people present. That initial abatement that was begun the previous day continued. November sixth, twenty twenty-three, follow-up visit by code officer, verbal warnings given to people present. And then on November thirteenth through seventeenth of twenty twenty-three, abatement of the remaining structures and violations was conducted. There was an allegation that the code compliance officer refused to work with residents. This is, one is difficult because no responsible party stepped forward during the entire abatement process. No responsible party responded to any warnings, condemnation notices or abatement notices. No one on the property could claim ownership or provide any documentation of any legal right to be on the property. The code compliance officer had no way of determining who on the property was legally occupying it or who was simply squatting. There was an allegation of removal and taking of property. The exterior of the property was abated, which required cleaning up and disposing of the entire exterior. Apex Property Clearing did the abatement, they are required to dispose of everything. Nothing is saved by their workers or transferred to personal vehicles. When Apex cleans a property, everything appearing to be a violation is considered garbage and must be disposed of properly. This often includes sorting items to dispose of them safely, which can appear like placing items aside to benefit from them personally, but no evidence has been found of anything being removed that was not then disposed of at a transfer station, recycling center or other proper disposal method. Apex denies any of their team members taking anything from the site that was not subsequently disposed of and reports that no one on their crew witnessed Mr. Dawson take anything from the property. No evidence was found of anyone, of anyone taking anything for personal use. There is an allegation of destruction of property. When clearing trash, junk and vehicles from a property, they must necessarily be sorted so that they can be disposed of properly. This would result in things that appear to be trash treated like trash. My investigation found no evidence of anything intentionally destroyed. Landscaping was ripped out in order to gain access to the full property and to abate the violations such as removing ground contaminated by sewage and burned garbage and spreading gravel in order to facilitate the abatement. If you don't put gravel down, it becomes a muddy mess which makes things worse. I have not found any evidence of petrified wood being placed on a vehicle, but if this happened, it was because all of it was considered garbage by the abatement crew. Our code officer does not operate any heavy equipment and therefore could not have used any equipment to place petrified wood on a vehicle as was alleged. The Apex crew may have done something similar to this as part of their sorting. However, the vehicle would also have been considered a junk vehicle and, and would not have been protected from damage during the sorting. There was alleged disregard of a mandated twenty-one day notice period. There, there is no mandated twenty-one day notice period. City staff gave a variety of deadlines for different warnings and violations. The only twenty-one day period I found was in the condemnation notice for the house and all the remaining structures on the property. That period was for vacating the property, it was not a notice period for abatement of the exterior violations. Abatement of the exterior began before this period ended, but exterior abatement was already noticed previously and started well after those notices. There was an allegation that enforcement actions happened while Mr. Calvin Ames was gone on a quote unquote mushroom circuit. Notices and warnings have been issued for the property by mail, physical posting and in person since May of twenty twenty-three. There is more than enough time for someone to get notice and clean up the property, even if they do go on an extended sabbatical. There were allegations that city code compliance officer used a bulldozer to destroy property. Mr. Dawson does not have a CDL and the city does not own a bulldozer that he can use. Abatement crews likely used a bulldozer as part of their cleanup effort. There was an allegation that the city code compliance officer twisted the tongues on trailers. I have not found any evidence to support this allegation, the city does not have equipment that would do that. Apex reports that they did not do anything of the kind, moreover, they report assisting occupants of the property with towing trailers off of the property. There was an allegation that garbage was dumped off of, off of trailers. I did not find any direct evidence of this, however, it may have happened. Apex has to sort the garbage that's present so that it can be disposed of properly. And this may have involved dumping accumulated garbage off of a trailer so that it could be properly sorted. There was an allegation that the trash on the property was brought there by other people. This is perfectly possible, but no evidence has been presented to support this. Part of the responsibility of owning and controlling property is decided, deciding who and what is permitted on the property. If illegal dumping has taken place, the affected parties should file a police report. There was an allegation that there is nothing wrong with the house, therefore it should not be condemned. Structurally, the house is probably fine and it would not take a lot of work to bring it up to code. The house was condemned because it was a public nuisance, attracted squatters with no legal right to be there, had inadequate sanitary facilities, missing or broken doors and windows, no adequate heating, a missing chimney and a hole in the roof, an illegal attic bedroom and no water service. Water, water was previously supplied by a pump, a well and pump, however, it was, it was the, the power to that pump was through the, the derelict trailer that was leaking sewage. And with the removal of that structure, the pump no longer functioned. It would probably not take much to bring the property into compliance with building codes, however, at this time it violates several. There was an allegation that the power meter box was removed. The power has indeed been disconnected from the house and other structures on site. This is necessary when condemning a structure to ensure that no crews are harmed during abatement and to ensure that no one entering the property is injured. In addition, live power to a condemned structure is a fire hazard as per city ordinance. Conclusion. Contrary to the allegations, my investigation of the city's actions regarding eleven eighty-eight fifty-fifth avenue as well as my investigation into the conduct of the city's code compliance officer Blake Dawson has not revealed any wrongdoing, violation of policy or even name-calling. The only allegations that are supported by the record are matters that are simply part of the normal and legal code compliance process. I would just add one more item, I received this email from John Origer of Apex Property Clearing and Recycling. He writes, hello Blair, for our conversation, I'm sending this email to confirm my best recollection of the days of these jobs that occurred on or around November twenty twenty-three at the listed address. My experiences with Blake Dawson have always been extremely professional. I find him to be very knowledgeable about the laws regarding distressed property cleanups and dealing with difficult individuals. He has always dealt with these people in a very courteous and professional manner despite their unstable and unpredictable demeanor and their antics being very tough to negotiate. I have asked all of my employees about their observations of Blake and they concur with my assessment. I'm happy to give an in-person interview and so are my employees. My employees and I have never observed him using derogatory language toward any people. Sincerely, John Origer. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions of counselors?
Madam Mayor, I have one. Who, who's the deciding factor on what, how, how they condemn the property? Is there a particular company or is it the city or is there a process to that?
So our code specifies certain traits of a, of when a property can be condemned. The city has adopted the nineteen ninety-seven uniform, a, a uniform code for the abatement of dangerous buildings. That has a, several factors that are looked at and those are quoted in our condemnation notices too. You know, for example, if you own a property and you, you receive a condemnation notice, there is a period that you can contest that and it also contains the code provisions that, that detail what a property can be condemned for. Our building code official is Sean Eaton, who is a third-party building official with Northwest Code Pros. He has deputy, deputized Blake for code compliance violations. And so Blake consults with him and we work with him on, on matters like this. And so it's mainly staff interpreting the dangerous building code, visiting the property, documenting the violations that are present and what's, what's witnessed and then acting according.
So, so staff, is that Blake or is that somebody else?
So Blake does, the initial interpretation is, is Blake's investigation and he routinely brings items like that to me and we discuss it with Sean Eaton, the building official to verify that this indeed falls within that category.
Madam Mayor, are you done?
So the three of you sign off on condemnation? Okay, not just one person internally?
It's not one person who decides on condemnation, I mean, you, legally, you could be one person. The building official has the authority to condemn a structure based on his word alone. I don't feel comfortable exercising that authority because I'm not a building inspector and not, not knowledgeable in that area. And that's why we have a building official that we consult.
So he's the one that signed off on the condemnation?
Um, Sean. Yeah, I mean, yes and, yes and no, there's not like a, there's not a, a record that is signed off by one individual. It's essentially a directive given to the code compliance officer that, to move forward with condemnation.
So, so who gave the directive?
I did. After consultation with our building official.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I, if I'm wrong, tell me, I, I thought I heard that these folks had their own videos. Have we seen them?
No.
Okay. So it would be in our, we should be able to take a look at those if they have them.
I have requested them.
Okay.
But I have not been able to get a phone call back.
Yeah. Well, that would make a big difference if they have them, I would like to see them. You know, and if they, if they don't give them to us, then I think that that's kind of a, I don't know, no, I don't know. Thank you.
I'm kind of, just a clarification from a boundary standpoint, from an inside the residence versus outside the residence. How can we condemn an inside residence? Versus, I mean, give me a little bit of definition.
So condemnation is a, there's a wide variety of things that fit within condemnation. And the, the condition of the interior of a house is perfectly valid in determining whether it's a dangerous structure or not and whether it should be habitable. And so things, the safety of the building, the whether it has adequate sanitary facilities, adequate heat, protection from the elements, what level of deterioration there is in the building, those, there are a variety of factors that all go into that. The purpose of the, I think I've mentioned in, in August, there was an administrative search warrant exercised for the property where the municipal court judge signed off on that search warrant and then our code compliance officer accompanied by police officers investigated the property throughout. This was necessary because again, we had no information of anyone being responsible for the property. There was no contact with anyone who even claimed to own the property. And so seeing that situation unfold, we had to get more information about the conditions and what, what was being occupied and how. Based on that administrative search warrants, additional violations were found. We already knew about the leaking sewage because that came from a neighbor's complaint. That administrative search warrant revealed additional violations revealed the, the condition of the structure being simply not fit for human habitation.
Thanks for refreshing the memory of this case.
Madam, Chief, how many, give me a rough idea of how many times you had to, to go to that location and have just, I, I mean, you've been there, correct?
A lot, yes.
Okay. And was there anything that happened that was? And was there anything that happened that was out of line for you for a specific, you know, I, I mean, I don't know.
We've, I'll just say we've been responding to that location for, I've been here 26 years and would go there regularly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilors? We have two people who have requested to speak regarding this item. So Heather Kelly was the first one that signed up. So if Heather would come forward, sit in the chair and speak into the microphone. Hi Heather. Give your name and your address, please.
Heather Kelly.
Down so we can hear you because the microphone.
Heather Kelly, 1188 55th Avenue, Sweet Home Morgan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You wanted to share a little bit tonight?
Um, I was unaware that I was, we were, he was wanting to see the videos or evidence that I had on my phone. So sorry that I'm late to the game. I didn't know that was an option for me to submit those anywhere. I would have done it earlier. I do have them on my phone, downloading now. I don't know if it's too too late. But there would be one video in particular that I would think would be interesting. It was a conversation between the code enforcement officer and myself when he served the initial search warrant on the property looking for code violations and him and I discussed. And I told him that the reason that I had come back was because Calvin's absence, the property needed to be brought, you know, back into order. And this is before he ever showed up or did anything. That was my purpose for being there, that I was going to start remodeling the house. And I explained everything in the yard that he saw, why it was there, why it was happening, what my purpose was for it. I even explained how I was going to remodel it and, you know, turn the property into, you know, working for itself so that Calvin could live there and the property would essentially, at the end of it all, pay for itself. You know, turn it into like a duplex type situation. And I discussed all this in length and detail on a recording that I have with the code enforcement officer. But he decided that I was not a valid resident. He could not and would not work with me whatsoever. I could not bring anything up to code. I couldn't clean up anything on the property because he didn't see me as a valid resident, even though I had lived there for almost seven years and had it on my driver's license for six of those. I had, he said, I had nothing in writing from Calvin before he left. Who leaves something in writing with the people that stay at home on vacate, when they go on vacation, saying that it's okay for them to live there for another however many weeks? That's ridiculous. Do you, when you go on vacation, leave a note with, you know, whoever is staying back at the house, saying that it's okay for them to live there? That's to me, it seemed ridiculous, like nobody does that. But he would not work with me. And I'm not going to get into petty squabbling back and forth here and there, what he did, what he didn't. But I am going to tell you the next morning after the last meeting we had here, I woke up to the code enforcement enforcement officer parked outside my tent, which I live in now. I had a five-bedroom house not too long ago. Now I live in a tent, Calvin and I do, with two dogs. And it's, it's terrible. It's awful. But I woke up to the code enforcement officer himself a little after 7:00 AM, parked right outside my tent, leaning against his truck, waiting for me to wake up. I got outside my tent and he wasn't standing four feet from me, wanting to know why I slandered him to the council and why I was lying around town about him. He further over the weekend sat in his personal vehicle in the Bymark parking lot on two occasions that I know of. And of course, this isn't going to be on body cam footage or whatever. I don't know why he would do such a thing, but I I certainly would think that this is not in his job description to do this. I don't know. I don't know why he's doing it, but it's not okay. If you want to see the video, I'll have it done downloading soon. If you want to make time for that at the end or something. If not, I get it.
I think that we we would like to have the video. I'm not sure the best way to get it to staff, but we'd like, we'd be interested in the video. So thank you so much for coming forward, Heather.
Yeah, I can probably just share a link like through Google Photos with somebody and then you can access all the videos I have.
Okay.
You want? Okay, thank you.
I have a question of staff before we continue with any public comment. And so can we maybe clarify what it means to have a valid residence and what that means as far as I think the law is concerned?
Sure. So when you are dealing with a property, it's important to understand who has legal title to that property. Because if we don't have any idea of who a person is, we we don't, we don't know if they are simply passing through and staying there because they noticed it was empty or if they have any legal claim to be there. Now, in this case, we had no contact with anyone and the owners were listed as deceased. And so when someone claims to live on a property and has no lease that they can provide, there's no, we don't even, we don't know whether we can work with that person or not. Because when we, when we conduct activities, if we're going to do an abatement, that buying, that that ultimately can become a lien on the property and means that it's an expense for the property owner. We don't negotiate with whoever happens to be on the property when we're doing that work. Now, I will say that if someone is there and wants to clean up, we have, we do not stop them from cleaning the property. There were number of times, like I said, this goes back to May of 2023 and the abatement occurred in November. And so there was a why, a long period of time there where anyone could have addressed any of these violations if they chose. That did not happen.
So having a lease agreement would have been helpful in that particular situation?
Sure, or or at least being able to contact who had a claim on the property. Again, we, I know Mr. Ames has been here in the council meetings. We didn't have any contact with him the entire time. And so if he says that he received some of the notices, but we did not get any, have any, any contact with him to to move anything forward or even find out from him who was even allowed to be on the property. Not to mention the fact that the the will says that he's half owner of the, he with his brother would inherit that that property. And that's a will that has not gone through probate, so it's never actually gone into anyone's possession.
So my next question regarding probate and a will and property is if if there is a will and if it goes through pro rate, which we don't know where that stands right now. Would that mean the particular individuals would be allowed or permitted to fix the piece of or the residence that's there? Or can people who don't have ownership over the property fix a piece of property that's there?
There's, there's nothing to prevent someone, i- if someone is occupying a property and no one's actively kicking you off of it, which, you know, again, that didn't happen until later period of time. There's nothing to prevent anyone from cleaning up or making whatever repairs they see fit. Now, obviously, if they have to apply for a building permit or a planning permit, we're going to ask for the owner's signature on those permits. But anything beyond less than that, that doesn't require a permit, I don't know, I can't think of a reason why anybody would be stopped from doing.
Would a permit need to be acquired in order to try and get a building out of the condemnation status?
Yes. Because once, once a bill, now, again, the condemnation didn't happen until later, but once the condemnation notices is issued, it cannot be lifted until the building is brought up to current code standards.
And in order to do so, you would need a permit?
Well, for for the, for the level of disrepair and damage that we witnessed, yes, it would require a permit.
Okay, that's, this is making it clear. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, I'm going to move on to the next public comment of Calvin Ames. Please come forward, speak into the microphone so we can hear your name and your address.
Calvin Ames, 1188 55th Avenue. We got the videos up. Why was he the only one that got to watch that? That's a conflict of interest. I think you guys should watch the the police ones. Because it would have a lot of the same stuff we have on it. He's the guy's boss, you know, he's going to have, he's going to have to stick up for his work. And there was a lot of violations there that is wrong. You don't.
Mr. Ames, you can only speak to me. Thank you.
But, yeah. And the 21 days, he started on the eighth day. I can't remember, she got it on the phone. I should have got in here earlier and got this done, but I wasn't, I haven't had no phone calls from him. I'm sure he's got my number on record, 541 409 2867. And we have the videos to prove everything, but he said almost everything wrong. There was sewage leaking in that one trailer. Dawson, I guess, was only supposed to take the trailer, but once he got on my land, he just went crazy. And there's, there's those police records. She showed me one of them. Where Heather was on the ground begging him, asking him why he took her stuff to the dump after he said that she could get it out of the house. And he condemned the house the same day he did the trailer. The shop was never had a shop, never had a condemned notice on it. And it's crazy. I'd like to ask for a continuance, continuance. I just died here an hour ago and I'm upset over this. Thank God for Sweet Home Police Department and ambulance. Had a bad day today. I would like to ask for a continuance on this and I'll get everything here.
Okay. Thank you, Calvin.
Thank you.
For your comments. Just want to set the record straight that Director Larson's not the only one that's seen the videos. City Manager Young has seen the videos and I myself has observed videos as well. So, councilors, we have something before us. It's a request for code compliance abatement liens and we have a request for continuance. We need to do something with this item in front of us.
So Madam Mayor, if I may, I do have some of the same concerns that it wasn't investigated by a third party. That it was given a directive by Mr. Larson to the code enforcement officer to condemn it. And there are a Fourth, Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment constitutional right to property taking or private property owners. So I would really hope that we would request a continuance so evidence can be submitted on their behalf if they have it.
Madam Mayor, I have to agree with Councilor Sanchez. If they have a video, I would like to see the video. I think that's only in fairness to to us councilors to see all evidence in before us before decisions be made. So I think that the continuance probably would be in order, in my opinion. So I would second that request. I'd like to see a video.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is a motion to table this. Is that what I hear? That would be my motion to table for a continuance as requested by the property owner. Okay, and I have a second. So.
So how long is this going to take? How long are we going to put this off? It, how much, how long?
I think it's up to council to decide how long this is.
Well, actually, let's, one quick discussion here. You've got actually two, two issues really going on here. We have a, we have an abatement issue and we have an employee conduct issue, in my opinion. So we need to, I'm concerned about this employee conduct. Just to clarify, if they got a video of of contact.
If, if, if that turns out to be what we've been told, then I think they would, it needs to be addressed, but we don't have any record of that until we get that. And I, so I just, I'm concerned how long we're going to push this out. We're going to have to find it and then we're going to have to put something out there so we can say yes or no. And I'm not opposed to this. I don't, I just want, I don't want it to go on for six months.
I don't think, Councilor Trash, I don't think this will be a six month. I think one more meeting, next meeting.
Okay, I I can live with that. I can live with that.
So we have a motion and a second to table this to the next meeting, which is March 12th. To look at video evident or video that's is out there possibly regarding Mr. Dawson's activity. I would like to say the video that I did observe Mr. Dawson was very professional, but I would like to see all the information that might be out there. So we have a motion and a second on the table and so we need to take a vote unless there's further discussion.
If I may further discuss, I'm not necessarily sure about the conduct, but I am concerned about the condemnation process. I, I don't know, since Blair said that he wasn't comfortable giving that assessment, but then he gave a directive to the code enforcement officer and I'm confused, so.
Madam Mayor, could I give some clarification?
Definitely.
So the process is our code enforcement officer will go and take a look at a property and he has received extensive training to be able to find some of the particular violations. He will then meet with our third party building inspector. And then they will meet with Director Blair Larson, who based on all of that evidence will give a direction. So it is a process that occurs. It is not just Blair giving a direction, it's not Blake giving a direction. It is a whole extensive process that is also based on multiple reviews, multiple visits to the property and multiple actual violations that comply with our code as well as state code. Some of those condemnation violations were doors and windows that are missing and broken. No water to the house. The pump house received power from an accessory structure that was removed due to leaking sewage and other problems. A hole in the roof where a metal chimney used to be and that was removed and not covered. So there's just holes and large hole in the roof. No heat source aside from a small fireplace, which does not have a chimney because we just mentioned that chimney was removed. And so it is a health and safety violation, various openings and ceilings and walls and an illegal bedroom in the attic with various safety violations. So this was condemned because it does not meet any type of safety or health code. And excuse me, I'm not, if I misspeak, please jump in there. So that is the reason. So that was what our building inspector reviewed. And these are states and what, the 1997
Uniform.
Uniform code. And so this was a very, very long process.
I should just add that our building inspector, because he's a third-party building inspector, he cannot give directives to state, to city staff. That has to come from me. And so I oversee the contract with that third-party building inspector. I interface with him and meet with him on a regular basis. And but when it comes to giving directives to our city staff, that can't come from him.
Well, Madam Mayor, we, we, we've got a kind of a problem here. And we need to find out what's going on. And hopefully by the next meeting we have, we can figure this out. But it's, it's the biggest part that we're missing here is what they're saying they have in films. And that will probably answer a bunch of our questions and what we have and and our concerns. So I think, I think we should move on to it and we can, we can beat this on for another half an hour.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So Director Larson reviewed the body cam footage. I did as well. And neither of us found any of these allegations to be correct. There are some videos which I would like to see as well, and I think having those come to us would be good. Are you comfortable with them going to Director Larson? Would you like them to go to me? Would you like them to go to Chief Ogden? Can they come to all of us?
Well, my question, do we need to see it if we, if we, if they get the information, maybe we, I would kind of see it. That's up to you, I guess. I don't know.
Typically, and please step in if if I'm misspeaking here. Because this is a staff employee, it is our responsibility as staff to review this and to make sure that we are following this. This is an operational piece. And council does not typically speak in or weigh in on, in fact, are not supposed to, with the exception of Robert Snyder and myself on their. Are not supposed to, with the exception of Robert Snyder and myself, on their actual positions. So, but we are more than happy to share our findings and.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that if you get the information you have, that you're not going to tell us what it is. I'm not saying that.
No, but we do need to be careful that we make sure that we, the council is set up as policymakers and we provide guidance, but we do not do employment matters. So I would suggest that. Mr. Snyder receives that video.
That sounds great.
And then I would like to also see Counselor Gorley, you had turned on your microphone. Did you have any comments or questions you would like to share?
I just, this is a really sensitive matter and it's, we're talking about vulnerability and a large expenditure here. I don't see any emergency to make a decision tonight. But at the same time, I'm concerned that Chief Ogden has been out to this property numerous times. And I'm, I'm really concerned. And so. I think it needs to be dealt with at least by our next meeting.
I think that Mayor Coleman is dead on. I think if our attorney Snyder would, would be present, I would be satisfied with that.
And for those that do not know, the reason we're choosing Attorney Snyder to review the video is because he's a neutral third party, so. He's not a direct employee of the city. And he can handle employee matters. So we still have a motion and a second on the table. So Cecily, would you please take the vote? Yes. You are contracted employee. I understand. We are also called employees for some purposes, but we're elected officials, so.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorling?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes. Let the record show that we have six eyes and one absent to table this agenda item until the next council meeting so that Attorney Snyder can review video. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Third reading for zone map amendment. By title only.
Ordinance Bill number two for 2024, ordinance number 1325, and ordinance amending the zoning map.
Any questions of councilors? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1325. Cecily, please take the vote.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Proton Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorling?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Thorstedt?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six eyes, one absent to adopt ordinance number 1325. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, council business for the good of the order. This is where we could discuss the item that was brought before us by a public comment earlier regarding an ADU. Or any other matters of council. Yeah, I have two things I would like to mention is the Health Committee meets, the Community Health Committee meets again tomorrow. It's our first meeting of being codified. So Counselor Gorley, I hope you're able to join us there. I think there will be an exciting time for that. And then also keep in mind that chamber banquet happens on March 9th. Any other council business for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor, I, I'd like to have an emergency executive session to discuss council conduct. When we can get that done as soon as possible, whenever that's, whenever we can be to make that happen, so.
So to call an executive session, we need to just. No one councilors would be available for such a meeting. We can do it either. March 5th, which is next Tuesday. We can wait till March 12th at 5:30 PM. The councilors available or not available to. Yes, we can do it before the council meeting on that.
Works for me. It's fine.
Okay. So we're going to have a executive session on March 12th at 5:30 PM regarding council conduct.
Madam Mayor. Thursday, oh, no, sorry, tomorrow, the 28th, the 28th, I have a pre-op appointment. Because I'm having surgery on the 15th. So to work around my students and not to miss any more time because I'm going to be off for several weeks. I have to have that meeting at four o'clock tomorrow. So I will miss the Health Committee meeting and I apologize for that, but. And then I will be gone for a little bit after the 15th.
Okay.
Wish you the best of luck.
Yes, we do wish you the best of luck and we're sorry you have to go through that. Any other council business for the good of the order?
You probably know that I'm on the Parks Committee and, and, and I, I would. I would like for the council to help out with the very minimum. Donation would be helping for us, would make the city be on the same page for everybody. If you could do that, that'd be great. We've, we've got a big process. Thing we're trying to do at the Sankey Park with the community center from, was from the fan stand in the days. And so we have to get a lot of money to get that for the, for that, or we don't, we could lose some of that, I guess. Angela would be more after that. But anyway, if you could do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Thorstedt.
The ADU situation.
I think that we could. Ask staff to look into that. Or we could have staff come back with a report at a future council meeting. You would like that? Do we have a consensus or any other councilors interested in having a staff report regarding the SDCs on that ADU?
I think we need a little bit more information on it.
So if we could get a staff report just on the status of that piece of property and, and what the SDCs are and maybe the laws regarding. Or our code regarding different, yeah.
I can certainly provide that.
Okay.
Just at least explanation for. Why we have those things in place. I, I've met with the property owner, so he's aware of, of what we have in place. The why is not always apparent to staff. We just know what the rules are. When we are familiar with how things were passed, we can provide that information, but. We do our best to educate the public on what the rules are.
If you can bring it back, just so we can understand as well, that'd be really helpful. Any other items in the council for the good of the order?
Well, if we're going to be looking at that, I think long term because of the legislation that has occurred that makes this a possibility for these mother-in-law cottages. I really would like to know what our other options could be if we need to update our code for those dwellings.
I, I can confirm that our code is completely up to date with the city statutes. We do allow ADUs. There's not a state statute to require waiving SDCs on them, but there is a state statute requiring us to allow them, which we do.
Alright, so seeing other, no other items, I'm going to close this meeting at 7:27 PM.